Good evening. This regular meeting of the April 10th, 2017, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Mr. Byteen.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohuska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Seagert.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
Thank you. I believe we have a group from Fulton that's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
My name is Juoz Buchanan and I am in fifth grade.
My name is Demetrius Mims and I'm in third grade.
My name is Lakronlin Stewart and I am fifth grade.
My name is Kale Callaway and I'm in fourth grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, guys.
I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 20 and the special meeting on April 3, 2017, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 20 and the special meeting on April 3, 2017, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Let's see. Kevin, are you going to review this first for us?
Good evening, Board members. Superintendent Rheingans, tonight, the district is asking you to approve the certified budget for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 17, '18. As part of that approval, we're also going to ask you to approve the levy rate that's included in that budget proposal. The levy rate we are asking for is $14.95 roughly, which is about 2 cents lower than last year's. The certified budget proposal is a document we put together for you each year, and in that document, there's a history as well as charts on graphs that give information about the past levy rates, as well as the current levy rate, and other information that is important and used in the calculation of the certified budget. So I'm going to take a few minutes tonight to talk about different pages of that document. The opening page is the message from Superintendent Rheingans, so feel free to read that when you are able.
It's a must-read. It's a must-read.
So we're going to flip to page 10 of the document, and on that, you will see the levy rate and all the different components. We have the general fund, which is the top section, then the management fund, and the Pebble fund. So those are the three funds that we levy property taxes for to help fund both those three funds. Again, it's part of the total certified budget, but not all of it. You can see, in the top section, we calculate what the district cost per pupil amount is, and then we also itemize all the individual pieces in the general fund that we were, and how much that particular section costs for the levy rate. Any questions on that section? Next page I want to bring your attention to is page 11, and this shows the history, the last 10 years of the levy rate. So back here, 10 years ago, it was right around the $16.50 level. It rose to just under $17 for about four years. Then it went in decline as funding kind of dropped off, as you know, the history with our state legislator. So that actually lowered the levy rate a little bit. Right now, we are proposing the $14.95, which is $2 lower than it was historically, the high historical amount back in the 2008 to 2012 range. The next page section is, we want to compare our UEN rates, or our levy rate, to the other UENs, the other urban education network schools, which are the large city schools. Their demographics are similar to ours, and so what we like to show you is how do we rank compared to those other UENs? Many years ago, we were in the middle, but the last few years, Dubuque has dropped down to be the lowest rate amongst those eight schools.
Kevin, would you say that again, just for emphasis?
Our rate compared to the other UEN rates, we are the lowest of the eight for the last couple of years.
And just let it hang there for a moment.
Next page that I want to turn to you is page 12, and this is what you saw in the paper. That is the total certified budget that we're asking you to approve tonight. It includes all the funds, revenue and expenditures for all our funds that are required to budget, which is more than the general, Pebble, and management fund. It includes the sales tax, it includes the nutrition, it includes the debt service student activity. So we have to combine all of those amounts into one line item for you to see. So that's why that number is significantly higher for expenditures than what would be just for the general fund. This includes all funds. You will see an increase from last year on the bottom, under total expenditures and other resources. You see it's going up about $10,000, $11,000, $1 million. That is because of the continued work on senior. We did not have a full year's worth of expenditures on the senior project, as that started mid-May to June. We will now have 12 months' full construction, so obviously, the costs will go up compared to last year. The final piece I want to talk to you tonight is, we always put in here how it affects the individual classifications of property taxpayers. So you'll see in this first schedule, we have the impact of our levy rate on residential property, as well as on commercial property. We take the data from the city's budget document for the average values of the different classes of property, and then we plug in our levy rates. So you can see in the first one, the total taxes difference between last year and this year on a personal property is $23.81, and it went up. So you may say, "Well, wait a minute. You just told me the levy rate's going down 2 cents. How could this go up?" Well, the state sets the rollback amount, and that takes your assessed value times that rollback number to come up with the taxable value. Well, this year, they raised that rollback amount a little bit, so that's why you see it actually costing $23.80 more to a taxpayer on this average property than it did last year. Again, that's controlled by the Department of Revenue; that's not controlled by the district. In the commercial, again, the rollback did not change, and the equalization order actually went down a little bit from the prior year, so they are receiving a small decrease in the amount of property taxes they will pay. If we switch to the next page, it's got the industrial and the multi-residential, which is really like apartments, et cetera. Those fit into the multi-residential. There, again, levy impact on industrial was small because of no change to the rollback or equalization order. Now, the residential, I should say, the multi-residential, went down a little bit more than the other ones because they changed the rollback there. They actually decreased the rollback a little bit, so that's why you see a little higher number for the decrease. Any questions for me?
Kevin, I would just say, I like the fact that you right-size our budget rather than go overboard or undercut. You know, we don't want to skimp on students, and so somebody might be out there thinking, "Well, we ranked dead last in the UEN in terms of how much we assess," but the bottom line is, there's a spending authority that, no matter how much money we collect, we can't spend any more than that spending authority anyway. So all we do is stockpile cash, right? Tell me if I'm wrong.
We aren't stockpiling cash.
But that's what we would do if we were to continue to exceed a reasonable amount, and we could do that, and maybe there's some situations where that might help us down the road if the legislature says, "Well, we'll let you use some of that unspent balance." Generally speaking, though, all we do is just stockpile cash at the taxpayer's expense. So we really don't want to do that. I appreciate the fact that you've always tried to right-size the budget so that we have the proper amount of money in a given year for the kids that we have that year.
That is our intent to serve the kids in that particular, to the best ability that we have.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and the budget estimate, and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of the notice of public hearing on the budget estimate, and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in open forum. Is there anyone in the building that would like to discuss, make a comment regarding the budget?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2017, 2018 as published. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2017, '18 as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Kevin, we would certainly thank you and your finance team. I know you and Rick and the whole group spent a lot of time, and I would echo Tom's comments. We levy what we need and try not to do any more, but try to make those dollars go as far as they can for the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board salutes.
I have one. We would like to congratulate two Prescott Elementary third-grade students who are winners at the Iowa Architectural Foundation's 2017 Youth Art Contest Awards. Christopher Gomez was the statewide K-3 winner in the Architecture by Children drawing contest, and Hayden Lowenberg was the Northeast Regional K-3 winner in the same category. The students in the contest were invited to draw architecture that represents their favorite place to read. Congratulations to both Christopher and Hayden in the wonderful accomplishments.
Thank you.
I have a board salute. A board salute goes out to the Moxy Squad Student Leadership Group from Washington Middle School, that has continued to play a role in community-wide discussions around cultural competency. In addition to teaching Washington staff and peers about intercultural competency each month at school, the group recently shared a lesson that facilitated a community conversation hosted by Inclusive Dubuque. Hats off to these students for its important work. They've been great leaders in our community.
Thank you.
I also have a board salute. Congratulations to Roosevelt Middle School's seventh-grader Cecilia Darter, who received $1,600 from an investor panel in the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce Young Entrepreneur Academy. Cecilia will also represent Dubuque as a Saunders Scholarship semifinalist while competing in a national event in Rochester, New York. Also, kudos to Roosevelt students Luke Coats, Kunal Chu, and Hempstead High School student Ashley Klein, who also participated in the six-month program on entrepreneurship and raised funds for their startup business. It's awesome.
Thank you very much.
I've got one, Mike.
Yeah.
I saw in the paper today that George Beeves passed away. George was a longtime school board member. I think it said he had 15 years on the school board back in the day, and I think he did almost that in the parochial system as well. So he was a public school and a private school school board member. George was a military man back in the day, and I think he was a member of the plumbers' union.
Yes.
Just a, you know, a dedicated citizen, and I was, I think George was 93, I think it said, so he lived a good, long life, but still, you hate to see those community icons like that pass away.
Thank you, Tom.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order.
Oh, wait.
You're right on board.
You're right afterwards.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. At this point, any person wishing to address the board can do so at this time, can step forward.
Now you're up, Shirley.
Cue Shirley.
Shirley, could you speak into the microphone so they can hear you at home?
My name is Shirley Davis Orwal, the Fine Arts Coordinator for the Dubuque Community Schools, and tonight, three community partners are receiving the red carpet salute, and deservedly so. I've enjoyed collaborating with all three community organizations in my role as Fine Arts Coordinator. All of the community partners honored tonight provided students in the Dubuque Community Schools Fine Arts Programs opportunities that they might not have had otherwise because of their generous contributions. So I'd love to honor at this time Dean Beersford from the US Bank, and from the University of Dubuque Heritage Center, Tom Robbins and Alan Garfield, and from the Dubuque Museum of Art, Margie Burr, David Schmitz, and Dr. Langley. Now, if you could just please come up here and just say a few words about your partnership with the Dubuque Community Schools. First, Dean.
Well, commitment to building strong communities is important to US Bank, and so we're proud to be part of a relationship that does just that, builds a strong community here in Dubuque, and thank you very much for that opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Robbins, Director of the Heritage Center at the University of Dubuque. I'm going to take a little more time than he did. That's okay.
Absolutely.
First of all, I'm a proud alum of the district, being a Hempstead 1987 graduate. I think Tom is around that circa.
Couple of years older.
Somewhere around there.
Yeah.
But, so, very proud to be an alum, but also proud that I've had an opportunity through this position to serve the school district through the University of Dubuque. Our mission at the Heritage Center is to ignite a passion for the arts, both on an appreciation level of the arts and our participant in the arts. Kind of our goal is that young people get to the point where they realize how much the arts can enhance their life over the period of their full life, either as a spectator or as a participant. So one of the programs that we try to do that through is our School Bus Performance Series, and this is a series where we bring in touring professional artists doing mostly theater, but occasionally music and dance as well. And this program has continued to grow. From the first year, we had 3,000 participants, up to over 12,000 this year, and one-third of those participants are actually from the Dubuque Community School District. We're drawing from throughout the entire region, but one-third were from the Dubuque Community Schools, and I'm also proud to say that about 40% of those students received free admission to the program this year. And we wouldn't be able to do that without the generosity of others, like the Dubuque Racing Association, who we got a grant through this year, and US Bank, who helped bring students to the Heritage Center this year. And all 13 elementary schools were represented at one point throughout the year, all three middle schools, and special programs like the Connect Program and Anna B. Loether Academy at Hillcrest as well, I include in that, in those numbers. So we're very happy to be serving your students through these programs, and we appreciate the partnership and your support, and I have to give compliments to Shirley. Thank you for helping to facilitate the relationship as well. So thank you for the honor tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to introduce my colleague, Alan Garfield, who oversees our art gallery, which is another partner in this process.
Alan, thank you. I guess I owe you a quarter now. I'm Alan Garfield, and I'm a teacher. I'm a professor at the University of Dubuque, but I'm also Director of the Bizignano Art Gallery, and for the last five years, it's been our honor in January to host the Dubuque Area High School exhibit there. Now, as you'll hear later with the Dubuque Museum of Art, there is already a venue for high school students to show their work, but this is a special one, and we really enjoy it because it's a time when the high school kids can kind of intermingle with some of the college folks as well, some of our college students. It's also a time, a unique show, in which the jury is the teacher themselves. So we don't jury it. We don't have an outside juror, and this has produced really unique results. As you know, sometimes a student is at a particular point where they need a little attaboy, they need a little reinforcement. Maybe their work is not the best in the world, but it's okay, but they need it, and this is a time that the teachers kind of exercise their duty. We have a show in our beautiful gallery. If you've been to any of the events that Tom had mentioned at the Heritage Center in the Butler Hall, then you've seen our beautiful glass gallery, small but sufficient, and we really enjoy it, meeting the kids and their parents. So thank you very much. It has helped, I think, the whole community, I mean, all my colleagues here, because we play one-off on another. You see, having a one-off event does no good, but when we start communicating with each other and sharing our resources, then the kids all benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name's David Schmitz. I'm the Director of the Dubuque Museum of Art, and speaking on behalf of my colleague, Margie Burr, our Director of Education, Heather Carnes Rundy, who's a teacher here in the district, as well as Dr. Randy Langley, all of these folks deserve the credit for this award tonight, particularly Margie, who we were chatting outside a little bit in our collaboration with the district on our annual K-8 exhibit, goes back 20 years, and that was something that Margie really helped initiate. And Dr. Langley, I want to particularly thank as well Tri-State Independent Physicians has been a supporter of that exhibit for many years as well, with this support. You know, what Alan just said here right at the end about when we share our resources, we get a lot more impact in the community, boy, that is really true. None of us within the arts and cultural nonprofit world in Dubuque have enough resources on our own to do it, and so when we go together and we work with Shirley or work with Alan and Tom in pool bus transportation or do joint exhibits, the result is that more lives are impacted. And the second thing I would just say, why we feel so strongly about, are so grateful for our work with the school district, is that, you know, we work a lot with adults as well, and rarely, if ever, do you find an adult who's passionate about the arts if they didn't have a really transformative experience as a kid. It's really rare. Most of the time, someone cares about art as an adult because they had that positive experience. So we feel so strongly about being a partner with you all and doing what we can to impact student achievement and their confidence and their growth when they're young people. So thank you all, and if anyone would like to say a couple of words, if not, again, we're just so grateful for your support and thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly, it's our students who benefit from this, from your work, and as a superintendent in an urban education district and speaking with my colleagues from around the state on a per-regular basis, this is not, doesn't only take place in Dubuque, but it takes place in Dubuque in a stronger fashion, in a more coherent fashion because of, you know, the work that you all do to help drive that. We certainly won't expose all of our students to a wide variety of experiences, and the arts certainly top of that list, so we appreciate you making those experiences available for them.
I think that deserves a standing ovation.
Thank you, Ray.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to remove anything from that agenda for separate consideration? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to Facilities Support Services Committee report, Mr. Byteen.
We have a few motions. I would ask that you hold your applause until the end. I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Freevert, Ramsey, and Cobs Architects Engineers PC for professional services for the pool replacement project in the amount of 7% of total contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Freevert, Ramsey, Cobs Architects Engineers PC for professional services for the pool replacement project in the amount of 7% of the total contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move that the Board of Education approve the bid proposal, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Premier Furniture Equipment LLC for the senior high school renovation furniture fixtures and equipment project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the bid proposal, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Premier Furniture Equipment LLC for the senior high school renovation furniture fixtures and equipment project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve and execute construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with MMC Mechanical Contractors for the Alta Vista Campus Boiler Replacement Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with MMC Mechanical Contractors for the Alta Vista Campus Boiler Replacement Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Geisler Brothers Company for the Eisenhower Cooling System Replacement Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Geisler Brothers Company for the Eisenhower Cooling System Replacement Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Gacy Roofing Company for the Hoover Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Gacy Roofing Company for the Hoover Roof Replacement Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd simply add that all of these are approvals that were based on competitive bids that were submitted. The most reasonable bid, obviously, selected for the value presented, and that was all reviewed during the Support Services meeting, just FYI. I move the Board of Education approve the preschool fee for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the preschool fee for the 2017, '18 school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the adult food and nutrition lunch charge for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the adult food and nutrition lunch charge for the 2017, '18 school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
This is a non-action item, but Kevin Keller here will share with us that the certification of financial excellence that his team received this year.
Good evening, again, Board. Just wanted to relay to you, as you know, we put together our financial report for the end of year, which is our year-end was June 30, 2016. You approved that in December, and those financial statements had been audited by our auditor, but we also submit it to the International Association of School Business Officials. We submit that report for them to review to make sure all of the documents, the tables, the statistics meet their standards for a good financial report, and so after they've reviewed that, they then issue us a certificate of excellence in reporting, so we wanted to make you aware that the award came this year.
Congratulations.
Kevin, how many years in a row is that?
I believe this is the eighth year in a row that we have, since we originally submitted, we've received it for eight consecutive years. And a lot of credit goes to our finance team. They put a lot of heart and soul and time into this.
Yes, they do, and a lot of paper.
Kevin, thank you.
All right. Okay, you do want to present first, or should we move it?
For the quarterly budget, there's really only two pieces that I want to bring to your attention, and they are on page 101 of your packet. Has to do with the total general Has to do with the total general fund expenditures and encumbrances. When you add those two numbers together, they are about $123 million at this time. I believe that's probably a little low, we'll probably have some additional expenditures come in, but that is right around our projection for the total year, so I think we're doing okay right at this time for ending up in the year of close to where we had projected for total expenditures in the general fund. The other piece I wanted to bring to your attention is under the Pebble Fund. Same thing, if you add the year-to-date and the current encumbrances out there together, they actually add up to be $330,000 more than the budget. The reason for that is, the expenditure number for this year was our 15-16 school buses. They came in a little late, missed the end-of-the-year cutoff. They were budgeted in the prior year, but we didn't spend it. They came in, so we spent the dollars this year, those dollars rolled over. We just did not amend this budget amount for. That's the reason that it shows that big of a deficit. Okay? Any other questions on the budget?
With that, I'll move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Brings us to, thank you, Mr. Bytine, brings us to Educational Programs Policy Strategy Committee Report, Ms. Whippen.
We talked a little bit about, Mike Sais, the Director of School on Community Relations, provided a historical perspective on communication in the district. The goal has always been to push the district past where other districts are, so he gave us an update on all the technology, everything we have in place, including the buses having access Wi-Fi, you know, a lot of great things for the students to continue with their education in different places. Talked about laptops, all these wonderful things that we're trying to stay a step ahead as much as we can. We also looked at four different policies just for updates, and that was about it.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Whippen? Thank you. Brings us, any board member comments? All right. Administrative issues?
Not at this time.
No issues. We're not doing an issue.
You're trying to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you know, obviously, the paper this morning ran the announcement that I decided not to run in the fall, and I did make my colleagues aware of that decision last week, and, you know, we still have a lot of work to do. We have several months before that election comes forward, but I will repeat the fact that it's been an honor serving and look forward to the next few months, and I think it was time for others to express interest and come into the fold, but the direction that the district is going is the right direction, I believe. We have the right leadership, we have the right combination of educators and people who care about our kids, and it's just been an honor for me to be here.
Thank you. Great. We'll find some really tough three-month projects.
Yeah, there you go. It's time to go late, come on, bring it on.
There's the invite. All right, thank you very much.
Special envoy to Des Moines, right here. Lame duck, nothing to lose.
Indeed. They'll never know what hit 'em. Anything else? Any previews for?
No, just that we're quickly approaching the end of the school year, it'll be graduation time and everything else before we know it. Also, a reminder that in May, we do have two board meetings, the second of which will be really a strong brainstorming session with the board, a work session around the strategic plan.
Very good. All right. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.